Good morning and welcome to the Orlando Sentinel's editorial board interview for the Orange County Commission race in District Three, which sits right in the middle of the county and includes much of East Orlando, including part of the airport and Valencia College. In this race, Commissioner Mauro Yuribe, who has held this seat since 2018 and previous to that served as an aide to U.S. Senator Bill Nelson, is being challenged by State Senator Linda Stewart, who previously served on the County Commission, and Gus Martinez, an IT professional who is founder of a homeless assistance charity and who has served as chair of the Orange County Commission on Aging. And I'm going to dive in with our first question. It's very much on people's minds right now. The county has a very broadly involved response to homelessness. What more, if anything, do you believe the county government should be going to address this issue? And let's start with Commissioner Yuribe.
Well, good morning, and I want to thank you Orlando Sentinel for hosting us this morning. It has been a pleasure to be out here and be in the community and also to serve as a county commissioner for six years and running for my last term. This is it. We are term limited and we are out there. Homelessness issue has been a huge part of what we've been dealing with for six years. We established the housing for all, which unfortunately there just isn't enough funding to do everything and build everything accordingly. We have great programs that are out there. We work with incredible folks and agencies, including through the Homeless Services Network, Coalition for the Homeless, Samaritan Village, Catholic Charities, Salvation Army, all of these great organizations, but we just don't have enough. We have a lot of concern of this new legislation that was imposed on us that will require the county to come up with safe areas and where now we are getting into a legal situation, but we've got to push forward. And I certainly, this has been one of my beliefs, is we have to preempt when folks are getting to that point of being homeless. I think a lot of times there is an issue where I'm one car payment away or my car broke down. I'm not going to be able to make rent. I'm deciding between food and medicine. I'm deciding these choices. And a lot of times, we started the pre eviction program here in Orange County to try to eliminate that process because we know once you're evicted, the challenge to get rehoused is so much more difficult. So we really, really need to pivot to prevent homelessness. We also need to continue to contribute, and I'm so glad that I'm a part of this, is mental health services, also drug services. We now have a free program for outpatient rehab. We also are aggressively offering mental health services. I serve on the central floor and the central receiving center of the board right now, but this is an entire process. It's not just homelessness. It's all the services that go with there and a big chunk of that is preventing homelessness is what we need to continue to work on. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Stewart. Same question.
Well, we didn't get here overnight, that's for sure, and we have had these struggles for years and years, and now it's gotten totally out of hand. I think that the commission that has been put together with, at the county now that is evaluating what we might be able to find a permanent type shelter. I opposed the bill that they Senate finally passed and so did the House where they wanted to put tent cities outside in some area that was owned by the county, and I thought that was the worst idea ever. We need to have permanent type housing purchased so that we have access to relocating all the homeless that are out there so they can have a leg up. And I think that one of the areas I want to look into is the box communities. They have a box city in Lake Nona that is really nice, and I think that we could operate by purchasing some of these containers, making them into beautiful apartments and letting that be an opportunity for our homeless to go to as well. So we have future ahead of us that needs to be attacked soon because we didn't get here overnight and we've got to work really hard to try to get as many people housed as possible. And to work with the agencies, they seem to not be able to function efficiently. So we need to make sure that happens and that we work with them to make sure that they have all the tools that they need to make people go into homes. They'll put them in a house for a month, but they need three months. It takes them that long to get their feet on the ground.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Martinez, your take on the issue?
I want to thank you all for having me here, including me, and not undermining my presence. Both the commissioner and the senator are correct in their statements. However, many of you might know that I got involved with the homeless situation back in 2010. So I was boots on the ground. I wrote to the city about the portable classrooms they were destroying and paying to destroy, might add, that could have been placed on so many of the property vacant lands that Orange County owns and used as military style kind of barracks so that we can stop the problem back then. That's an opportunity lost. It's going to require some artistic negotiating with code enforcement. What people are not discussing is that many of these homeless who are felons are residing within the same abandoned properties near your Walmarts, near your schools, and law enforcement knows about it, but where can we put them? Where can we put them if we don't want them anywhere? We've made it illegal for them to fall asleep. We've made it illegal for people to offer them food. So where is our empathy and our compassion in dealing with this problem? I think that we have a long ways to go, and unfortunately, believe it or not, we're a lot closer to California than we think. And, you know, I think the money is going to 211 and Homeless Services Network is being spent because I've sent many homeless there and 211, which is the entry point, doesn't have a clue of what we're talking about.
Thank you. I appreciate those answers from everyone. Before I get to the next question, if I would just reinforce for everyone, please mute your microphones when you're not speaking because we are getting a little bit of backtalk that's flickering some of these issues. And if you have an issue with not knowing how to mute, then I can take you through that, but otherwise, that will help me a lot. Meanwhile, I will go on to the next question, which is actually very much related, and you guys touched on this a little bit when it came to the homeless issue. But there's the issue of addressing how to handle the homeless population now, and then there's the issue of increasing the supply of affordable workforce housing because this county, and particularly Orlando, has been tagged as one of the least affordable in the nation. And I want to know how you would attack the issue of affordable housing itself. And Ms. Stewart, we will start with you.
I think too that these things have been lingering on for far too long and the answers have to come far quicker. But we can also look at, and we have looked at in the past, when new development comes in to set aside a certain amount of percentage for the affordable housing units. And so far, most of the developers have been okay with that, but that isn't going to get us where we need to go either because most of the time it's like 30%, 20%. That's just not enough. I think that what we have to do is make sure that we get developers and we give them incentives and also waive their perhaps transportation impacts or other fees so that they will be more likely to participate in affordable housing. We also don't need to have people come in with affordable housing units that they would like to put up and then have somebody say that they don't like where it is. Because, you know, we always have this thing, it's not in my backyard. Well, we're running out of space and some of these housing units can be made very nice and won't even be even thought of as affordable housing if they're done correctly. We just need to be able to bring in these housing units as quick as possible with the help of the developers and without infringing on an environmental concern as well. So we can all work together. We need to work together, and I think that we should be able to move forward with more and more affordable housing units.
Thank you for that answer. Mr. Martinez, same to you.
Okay, sorry about that. Couldn't find the mouse. I agree with Senator Linda Stewart. We need to offer developers some incentives, and she's right, the 20% affordable housing units is not enough. However, let's remember that developers aren't a charity. They're not in this to provide charity. They're in this to make money. So it has to be something appealing for them to do, including those discount impact fees. And at the same time, remember that they are going to qualify their potential tenants. It's not like we're going to dump somebody who's got the worst of the problems into their properties because let's talk honestly, that's going to, in their mind, devalue their properties. And it was mentioned earlier, I don't know who mentioned it, but not in my backyard, it's been a thing that's been going on for over 40 years, whether it deals with methadone clinics or other services of the community. I think, again, we need to be smart. We need to be aware of everyone's role in this and keep in mind that we are growing at a rate of about 3% more than any other city, and at the same time, our cost of living is 101%, almost 102% higher than any other national average. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Ms. Yuribe?
Great, thank you. I was just unmuting myself too. You know, this is not just an issue with hospitality workers because we know those are some of the most challenging jobs, but when you've got over 65% of your Orange County deputies can't afford to live in Orange County, when your firefighters can't afford to live in Orange County, your teachers, your nurses, this is a workforce attainable housing issue because it's not just about affordable housing. It's even attainable. The reality is we have plenty of apartments. They're just unaffordable. When you're looking at $1,800 for a one bedroom up to the scales of 2,800, that's more than a mortgage. This has gotten out of control. What we need to do is we need to continue to partner up and do these private partnerships. What we've just moved forward with Disney is a perfect example. We're going to be putting 1,000 units available to the community, but they're also picking up that transportation portion because in 2009, the county created an AMA, which didn't have to make transportation an accountable part of the development, and it's put us in behind on transportation of where we are now. Because if you can't connect people to work and you can't connect people to housing, we're building another deficiency. So we need more of that. And you're right, 20%, 30% is not going to get us there. But while we're working on housing, we have to be cautious of what we're doing to communities that are also suffering. Generational poverty is a growing issue, and if we really want to make an impact on what's happening in our future and our future community, all of that has to be combined. We have to realize you need transportation needs so that folks can get to work and get home. We need to work with private partnerships with the government so we can get good quality homes, but we also need to make sure that these wraparound services, because we don't want people to lose their housing. And that is something very, very essential that's happening, and we've got to move forward. And we cannot forget our seniors, our seniors in our housing project too, which we're building some incredible senior units around Orange County who are beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Tomorrow, the commission is going to vote on whether to put a rural boundary amendment on the ballot. Should that happen, do you think that's a good idea to put that on the ballot? And if it makes the ballot, how would you personally vote? And let's start with Mr. Martinez.
Well, I'm in favor somewhat of rural boundaries. Any construction in my mind requires not just signing a document saying that they can go ahead and build, but we need to do responsible building, right? To use my neighborhood for an example, we've had three four-story buildings going up on the left side of Wine Guard Road, and on the right side of it, we had a bunch of warehouses go up. Now, Wine Guard itself remains a two-lane road. To me, that's ridiculous. That should have required Wine Guard Road to be expanded considering how much more traffic. There's no additional traffic signals been added. It's just really, really difficult as a resident getting in and out of the neighborhood. And I know there's countless stories like that. When we first moved to Orlando, and I'm sure this is true for many residents, especially those on the outskirts, we moved because we liked being away from that big city feeling. And now, without rural boundaries, they're just creeping up right up into our doorstep, and I understand the outcry. So yes, we need to assert more responsible building and do our research when approving those because we cannot allow the traffic to explode 400% and not widen those roads. I just think it's stupid building. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Yuribe?
Yes, this is super, super important. First and foremost, we have a citizen review committee that met over 73 times and worked on this issue for 15 months because this is how important this issue is to the community. Yes, we have rural areas. We must have rural boundaries. We see what the city of Orlando is trying to do now and annex and just ignore that rural line that is not only important for the environmentally sensitive land, but also for infrastructure. How do you keep building irresponsibly? And let's be honest, I'm very upset at the legislature. How dare they cut off the ability for this with the citizens review committee to be a valid ballot issue? Us as county commissioners have had to take it on. We have had to take it on. We've had to deal with the supervisor of elections to get this on the ballot in an appropriate time so residents can vote on it, and it is absolutely important. I was one of those that championed for it. You know, us as commissioners appoint these folks to do this, and these citizens have worked on these issues for so long, and it is a shame, it is an embarrassment that us as county commissioners had to save this from happening. The legislature had no right with that Senate bill that came out of Pasco County for a senator who had nothing to do with this to preempt the hard work of what we do and what the citizens of Orange County do. Absolutely, we need this rural boundary. It should have never been preempted by the Senate, and we do need to move it forward, and I support this moving forward because it is the right thing to do. It is important for the future growth and protection of our lands going forward. Thank you very much.
Senator Stewart, what's your take on this?
Well, I have always felt that the citizens that have to put up with all this changes in law, changes in bills, that the citizens should have the right to choose, and I am fully in support of that ballot language. I also have been an advocate supporter of not messing with the rural boundary lines. We are growing, but we have to understand there's other ways to grow rather than to impact not just Split Oaks, but the Halskup Preserve and those areas up in the Wakava area by UCF. There's a lot of rural areas that we need to protect, and in order to do that, it seems like we've had to go to the extreme area of getting the voters to come in there and agree with us because once the voters have spoken, I'm hoping that the legislators will pay attention. So I'm 100% in favor of this going on the ballot and resisting anybody's attempt to not allow it to be there.
I did want to ask you to follow up really quickly. Did you not vote to support the bill that preempted the county from doing that?
I think what I asked was that it go to the ballot.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, we will, I want to keep us moving, but let me, I just wanted to ask, you know, ask you about that. And we'll check and make sure that I have your record correct, but it is something I did want to give you the chance to talk to you if you did. And then, I also wanted to ask, we mentioned Split Oak, and I'd like to, I'd like to ask, is the fight to save Split Oak, in your opinion, over? You know, is there still a chance that Orange County might be able to stop or force the rerouting of the Osceola Parkway that will go through it? And let's start with Mr. Martinez.
Well, I was in support of protecting Split Oaks. The flip-flopping on the county, all it did was rile up more emotions against the negative decision to go ahead and go through it, even though the people cried out and even though they said they didn't want it. The county decided to go ahead regardless of the people's emotions on that and go through with it. I think if you're of Hispanic descent, there's a saying that says, "Lo prometido es deuda," which means what is promised is a debt. Split Oaks was promised to us to remain protected back in the 90s, and somehow or another, the county commission forgot that. And obviously, you know, it didn't make it easier on the constituents with the entire, the scenario that played out with the flip-flopping on the county. Thank you.
Senator Stewart?
Well, you know, Gus is totally right on this. A lot of flip-flopping has gone on, and that's unfortunate. It sends a really, you know, bad message to, you know, where's people are going to go and what they should do. But from the very beginning, I knew what the outcome of the Split Oak would be if it was to pass, and that's to open up huge swaths of development. What they want that road to go through so that they could connect up to major roads so that they can bring more homes and more development into that area. And that's why we have to protect those rural areas, and I personally did not know why they moved the road so far into the middle. They could have brought a road that's closer to Narcusi and not had near the impact to the wetlands and all of the, and opening up so much land for development. And I think the whole thing boils down to where the road is placed is where development begins, and that's why you have to be opposed to it because this is where you're going to find future development spreading out, requiring more services, destroying wetlands, gopher habitats, all the natural beauty that we have over in the Split Oaks area. And unfortunately, it was, we do have the wildlife corridor that we did vote on, but unfortunately, Split Oaks did not reach that corridor, so it couldn't be protected. But that would have been an ideal situation. But there are all types of endangered people, not people, different birds and panthers and, you know, everybody is endangered over there. We want to keep them there and keep them happy and keep them away from the neighborhoods. It's hard to do that when you put a road through and then you allow the development.
Thank you. Commissioner Yuribe?
Yes, thank you. You know, when the Split Oak issue came out, it was about transportation and the road where the state gets to actually say when it comes to infrastructure, it's a different set of rules. And so what the county commission did was they actually tried to get the least impact as possible because we know Osceola County has literally built with intensity all the way up to the Split Oak line. And so what was done was to try to make the furthest point that could be done at not the one in the middle, not the one over to the left, and also try to acquire additional pristine land. Like we said before, this wasn't an easy issue when you're in a leadership role, but when you're told infrastructure can come in, DOT will be able to come in or expressway authority, and they'll be able to put a road where you want. We need to create less impact if that's going to happen, if that is going to happen. That was the information presented to us. And mind you, when you look at the actual map, it borders right at Osceola County and it skims all the way to the right side, not to mention the additional thousands of acres that were required. This isn't a good day for that. Now, what we have done is knowing that there was an opportunity to open that up when Osceola County decided to legally challenge what we were trying to do, we did try to fight for it. We have. That fight hasn't given up because at the end of the day, the reason why we're even dealing with the rural boundary issue and the annexation that the city of Orlando is trying to do is the same effect. They're still trying to push that line over and over and over again, and sadly, we're starting to see what it did on the west side, what's happened now in Horizon and Horizon West, and what's now happened alongside the Lake County Corridor. We're building too fast. We can't support it. When you look at the growth that's happened out there, they can't even afford the transportation or the agreements to support it. So we have to continue to fight. We always continue to fight, and I think the rural boundary is why it's such a huge fight to overcome and try to get a step protection.
Thank you very much for that answer. I wanted to skip over to some questions about accessibility, specifically when it comes to public records. Do you think the county commission is accessible to regular citizens, including their ability to follow commission business and attend meetings? Are there changes that you would propose to public records accessibility and meetings? And actually, Ms. Yuribe, we'll come back to you to start that one.
Okay, great. That's a great question. It is imperative as an elected official that you be accessible to everyone. Yes, our public meetings should be public. One of the things that I'm very proud of is every case rezoning variance that comes in front of us, I want to have it out in the community because people don't want to come downtown at 2:00 on a Tuesday and wait for hours and hours and hours. We've had those meetings go all the way to 1:00 a.m. Accessible and open and transparent government is key to what we do, and it is why I actually even got involved in office. And just most recently, what we saw happen when there was a millage increase with zero public notice, with zero community input was wrong. You have to let the community know. It is transparency, is respectful, and it is the most essence of what public service should be. When it comes to accessibility too, we're out there between office hours, community events. I have community events absolutely every single month. I'm having them every weekend now because of back to school, and people want to know that they could come and talk to their county commissioner. My cell phone number's been public for 24 years and it still is. I always think it's funny when people call me and they're like, "Is this you?" "Yeah, it's me. It's me. I actually have my phone number longer than I've been married." Because that's what we're about. When I decided to run for office, it was because I wanted better public access. I wanted my elected official to listen to the people, and we have challenged projects, most recently a liquor license on OBT, a junk truck hauling place on OBT, Ace Record, that wanted to have cars junked up in a community because the people came out and said we don't want it. We've turned down housing on Lake Underhill because the people have said they don't want it, and that's what the essence of public service should be, what the community at large wants, and trying to get some good, good messages going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart, same question.
Well, I think too, nobody can be opposed to going into the community and asking for public input, but what I have seen that is a bit of a failure is not all the information is correct that is given to the public. They're sometimes only getting half of what's going on, and then they're making their decision on those things that have been presented to them. So it's great to have public meetings, but it's also great to make sure every piece of a project is vetted out and let the public then weigh in on it, and that's perfectly, you know, American. So we should just make sure that once those public meetings take place, every aspect of that every aspect of that meeting and what the impact is, is truly uh given out to every person. So I've seen a number of times where that doesn't always happen. And then we have public meetings at the Board of County Commission. Uh, they're allowed to come in in the morning and say whatever. And uh, then they hopefully get directed to the right department if they're so frustrated. They don't know uh where to go and they've tried their best to, you know, find out on the phone. And sometimes that's their only alternative is to come in and see uh the people at the Board of County Commission to get some help. So I think you'll see many people will do it that way. Different ways of getting in touch with the community and with your constituents and with the commissioners and with the mayor um should be made available. And I think that they try them that their best to um allow them to come forward and and to speak publicly on camera.
Thank you for that. Mr. Martinez, same question.
Well, I think the county has made an effort um with Orange TV and and, you know, allowing the public to speak, um, which unfortunately went from two minutes to one minute. But we've got to keep in mind that these individuals who go speak at the at the county commission um are taking time out of their life, out of their work. Um, and they're giving their time to speak, but it's irrelevant because oftentimes their concerns fall on deaf ears. The decision is made already and there's no reconsideration of 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 their comments. And 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 most of them are valid comments and concerns. Because if one person has it, I can guarantee you hundreds of people uh in our district have that concern. Um, accountability is important, so it is necessary to communicate what's going on. Um, I myself have done hundreds and thousands of outreaches, and and many people just don't think of that as a political event. And and honestly, um, uh, integrity is important, right? I myself uh value my integrity. I value my honesty. And and if I got to tell a constituent the truth and say, it's not going to fly, then it's not going to fly. I can't change that because it takes all six votes to make things happen, or at least the majority of that. Um, I think I think we need um to improve that a little bit more. I think the 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 value of the public comments is is not really defined as a priority. And I think it's a waste of people's time, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, I wanted to to switch to the idea of consumer protection by the commission. Um, previously, as you all know, the uh county placed a ban on the sale of puppies and kittens. Um, they've also had had their terms at at doing um post-storm um fraud and and gouging. But I would like to know, should you be elected or reelected? Where should the county be looking next as a way to protect Orange County consumers particularly? And um, let's start with Senator Stewart.
Well, I will tell you, right now, I voted against that killing of bears in uh the area because that was just totally unnecessary. And so I'm a big bear person. There was no reason if a bear came out, you could just bring your gun out and shoot them. The second thing that we are dealing with right now is the coyotes. We have huge coyote problems um in the neighborhoods, and they're growing and growing and growing. And the uh fish and wildlife is not allowing us the tools to be able to capture them and to relocate them. They don't feel that that's something that needs to be done. But our neighbors is having their cats and small uh animals eaten. And it's it's an issue that I really want to get down to and make sure that the fish and wildlife look at a program to relocate these um families or families to a different location and not in our neighborhoods. We've got them in all neighborhoods. We've got them downtown. We've got them over in uh Thornton Park and all the neighborhoods around Lake Eola. It's um really out of hand. And I've been working on this and hope to continue to work on this because I don't want to kill any of the animals, but we certainly could should be able to capture them and put them in a safer place.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Um, and a same question for you, Mr. Martinez. What consumer protection issues do you think the county should be tackling?
Well, I mean, a- as a human being, right, um, we all think uh cute and furry um uh should be protected, right? Um, but just think about that housewife or or that individual who's home alone and 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 one of these not so cute furry animals creeps into their backyard, they're going to panic. Um, so as far as the sale, well, I agree with the measure that went through. Um, we need to uh crack down on those on those um illegal sale places, many of them, you know, um along Orange Avenue. Um, we 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 just wind up with 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 animals who are not certified, who 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 are not medically taken care of. Um, it's a production system when it comes to getting them in in the cage and out the door as fast as possible. Um, whereas, you know, we, when we go adopt an animal from from uh Orange County Center uh over there by um Americana, you have to provide a lot of information. You have to provide a lot of documentation. You have to verify that you are going to be a good family um um lead for this animal you adopt. Um, I think um it's on the right track. I would like to see the same initiatives taken in regards to human trafficking. Um, if we had more laws, um, like we protect our animals, protect our children, we'd be in better shape, wouldn't we?
Thank you so much. Commissioner Yuri Bay, same question. What
Yes.
other consumer protection measures should the county be considering?
Well, this is really good for me to talk about because, yes, we did do the protection of puppies and bunnies and kittens because we saw what was being happening. It was exorbitant, what they were doing to this industry. And not only that, selling these animals sick and not doing anything to protect them. We also did the rental ordinance because we had to protect tenants. Tenants were getting really bad services and no accountability to what they were doing. I mean, raising the rent tremendously with more than 25% and not giving people the opportunity to come back and fight that is major. And now we've created the tenant services office, which is a permanent division in Orange County, which unfortunately, the voters overwhelmingly voted and the legislature kicked us back and preempted us on a lot of those things. We've also established the consumer division in our office in in Orange County, and that is enormous. Because what we're getting a lot of, and this is another thing that I worry about tenants is, I've come, I've filled out an application for an apartment, or they've taken my deposit. We're seeing this happen more and more in the news, where people are being taken advantage of tremendously. And something that we are limited to because it's state legislature is mobile homes, which some of our most vulnerable communities are seniors live in mobile homes, and there is zero protection locally for mobile homes. But I think that one of the things we have to start pivoting more and what we're seeing grow tremendously is senior scams. We're seeing scams on senior citizens happening a lot, on food cards, on send us your gift card, and we need to be more aggressive. I'm glad that the county has developed that office. We're moving forward. But there is always something coming along with the next scam that's coming along, even internet scam. I would like to see more protection of that because that IT division is really, really, we get those calls and it's 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 disheartening when we hear and we're limited on how we can help. So we've got to keep fighting for the people who live in this community. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I um wanted to branch over and talk about transportation. How how do you believe the county should pay for transportation infrastructure? What are your priorities there? And should the county give the proposed sales tax another try? And with that, we will start with Mr. Martinez.
Well, I come from a big city, obviously. I'm from New York City, where we have one of the best transit systems in the world. Um, whether it be surface or or subway. And um the inequities of 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 links, and I'm going to go out on a limb on this. Links is a private business. They're not owned by the county. The idea of dumping more money into links, to me, is absolutely ridiculous. We are growing. We are among the largest cities in Florida. And as such, we should be developing our own Orange County transit system. So when it comes to the TDT, I disagree with the county's decision on spending it on a dome and on other issues that do not benefit the general population. I know it's intended for tourism, but pub public transit, especially in the downtown area, where they have so many sporting events, would benefit from our own public transit system. It's time we develop our own transit system. It's time we put our our money where our mouth is at. If we're planning on the growth of becoming one of the largest cities in Florida or even in the country, then we need to develop an accurate, timely transit system that's not going to let the the traveler or the pedestrian or whatever um lose their their job because they keep getting to work late on time, especially when they don't have a car. Whether the car is in the shop or not, it's irrelevant. It's an inadequate system. You cannot rely on links. We need our own public transit system.
Thank you for that. Ms. Yuri Bay, same question.
Great. Transportation is the key to anything in our town. Let's just be very candid. You can't get to work, you can't get home if you don't have good reliable transportation. I had been very involved at Metro Plan since I was elected. I was chair for two years. I also serve on the DITTS Advantage Board on the chair of that because access links is equally important. And most recently, the Secretary of Transportation, Secretary Perdue, appointed me to the 2055 Transportation Steering Committee for the entire state of Florida, which means I'm the only person who represents Central Florida about advocating for those funds, both the federal and state level coming here. And it is very, very important. The problem we have with the penny tax is that the county, the community, did not buy in just as overwhelmingly as it was turned down. Because you cannot keep going to the public and saying, this is what we're going to do. There has to be an equal spreading of public public transportation, infrastructure. You can't just abandon roads. And honestly, the Sun Rail, we should have renegotiated that deal. To now have to incur that cost that our ridership never even covered 20% of it, and now we're doing more, and now we're dealing with cities like Maitland, who are like, well, we don't know if we can afford our share. It's just a bucket that ends and ends and ends. Yes, do we need transportation funding? Absolutely. I attempted to get tourism development tax to look at reducing 2% to put into our community because on any given day, half a million people are in our town using our road, using our water, using our emergency services, but yet they contribute zero to our economy and to our own community. And I think until we make some real leeway to get this done, you're never going to gain the trust of the public, and they need to be solely engaged. Unfortunately, in Tallahassee, Senator Stewart tried to preempt any kind of changes to make to visit Orlando. Luckily, it didn't go anywhere, but our own lobbyist was on part of that, and the the mayor had to fire our lobbyist after so many years. We need some real accountability, and we've got to start having that conversation. It's happening around the state, and it can happen. We need to go to Tallahassee and get that for our community.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
Thank you.
Same question for you.
Well, I disagree with uh the commissioner on her assessment of what I was doing in Tallahassee. Uh, I think it's important that visit Orlando be funded and it not uh be 50% of the money come out of it is ridiculous. We have so many other needs. And I think that that's uh I'm going to say that what I did was absolutely necessary. But when we get to the transportation part of this whole the whole discussion, we definitely, you know, Las Vegas is doing a great job in finding funding to be able to put their road networks together. We should look at that. We need more links bus systems because we have to get out into the neighborhoods to bring them over to the Sun Rail and other connectivity. We also have to get um involved with the tourism on I-4 uh chamber folks to see what help they can give to us, maybe putting together a new funding source that they would contribute to so we can continue Sun Rail to airport and the convention center because that would be a loop that would, I think, highly uh help um not only our tourism, but our people going back and forth, particularly to the airport, because they're going to be going to various destinations. So I think that there is a overall transportation um fault that we are in right now. I am certainly okay with the with the, uh, I'm talking about everybody, uh, with the um mayor putting forward the initiative for the one cent. I don't think it's going to go, but you know what? We need to uh try it, see if we can convince the public that it's necessary because that's who has to vote. But in the meantime, there's a lot of other things that we can be looking at that we can at least get started on um improving our transportation. And that means in two, the roads and making sure our neighborhoods are safe. Um, because I think that we've been neglecting that a lot as well. So that's where I stand on transportation.
Thank you very much for that. We are running short on time, but there's one more question I wanted to be sure that we got on the record. Um, and and you all have sort of alluded to this, but I'm 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 more looking for a direct yes or no answer. The county's efforts to leverage hotel taxes for local priorities has fizzled. There's been possibilities of of a new impact tax to fund affordable housing. Do you believe that TDT should support community priorities like transportation? And we can sort of keep that to a yes or no answer, keep that short. And and Ms. Yuri Bay, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Easy enough. Ms. Stewart.
Yes.
And Mr. Martinez.
A super yes.
Thank you for your brevity.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you for the yes or no question.
Um, this is, this has been one of our most enjoyable interviews that we've had so far. I want to thank you, all of you. And um, and I wanted to remind our readers, um, the Sentinel is going to be making an endorsement in this race, as we we have in several others. But we are going to urge you, as always, don't just take our endorsement as as you're beginning in your end. Each of these candidates has web web presence, social media presence. You can take a look at what they have said and done on the record. And of course, we are going to have some excellent news coverage, already have. And so there's just a lot of information out there. So take a look at each of these candidates for those residents of of this district. And and pick out the person who best fits your values as a voter. And um, but the most important thing is to, of course, go to the polls on uh August 20th or before and um and vote in this race and many others. This is a very crowded ballot, so you'll have plenty to occupy yourself. With that said, um, I am going to ask our our three contenders to give us a two-minute pitch on why they should be the choice in this race. And I I did a little random computer drawing to determine the the final order. So um, let's start with Senator Stewart.
Well, we always enjoy coming to see everybody and getting those questions asked to us so that we can make the record straight. But I think that with my experience, I've been in the Senate for eight years, and certainly I was in the county commission for another eight. Uh, my experience in Tallahassee has been, I have experience. I'm successful in everything that I do when I'm up there. I work really hard and I am reliable. And I, you you get a straight answer from me every single time. I got $50 million in appropriations for our area. I passed over eight bills and that have been very impactful, women's bills, law enforcement bills. Uh, we now have no statute of limitations for women. We now can keep the rape kits for 50 years. There's a lot that um we can accomplish when we work together. And this doesn't happen, you know, when you're just uh, you know, I'm a Democrat, so I don't, you know, it's hard when you're in Tallahassee and there's 12 Democrats. But if you work together on bills that mean a lot to every single person that lives in the state, you will be able to uh make things happen. And so when you get $20 million to University of Central Florida, $9 million over to uh Valencia, I got $5 million for the Holocaust Museum, and it goes on and on and on. These things can happen if you are These things can happen if you are um open-minded and if you talk to one another and you don't fight. And that's the biggest uh compliment I think anyone can have is to come back successful.
Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Martinez?
Well, I am the baby of the bunch, obviously, not age-wise, but in, in, in political knowledge, obviously. However, I bring a fresh perspective. Let's not forget that elected officials are, are there to serve the interests of their constituents and not their own. Um, but the interest of the community. I, I have shown love for my community. I've been out there serving in the streets, serving on the county commission on aging. Um, I know what affects our, our, the majority of our community because let's face it, we're not all rich, but we are all affected by um the cost of living in Orlando being 102% higher than the national average. Let's not forget that I am the guy who is exposed to our seniors having to decide between medicine and rent and, and, and other resources, uh especially food. Um, I bring the love of the community. I bring my empathy to the community and that's never gonna change because I value my integrity. I'm never going to fill my pockets more than my salary. Um, I'm here to serve you and you can bet on that for the next four years. And if I'm lucky and blessed enough, you can bet on that for the next eight years. I'm here to serve you. I don't look for another job in the future. This is me, Gus Martinez. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mart- sorry, Commissioner Uribe. Could you please wrap us up?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank you for having us and hosting us today and being so helpful with us. You know, I'm born and raised in this community. I'm a first generation American. My parents came to Orange County in 1972 from Martin Marietta. And I was born and raised in Pine Castle. And this is all I know, my community. I've moved once in my life. That's when my husband and I moved one mile north of where I grew up and where I've had the pleasure in raising my two children. And I tell you, you really know what it's like when you grow up in this community. You've seen the changes. Some good, some not so good. But what you realize is you stand up for the people who don't feel that anyone is listening or watching. That's what made me run for this position in 2018 because I wanted to see better. I grew up off of Lawrence Blossom Trail and everyone's always had a tagline. That's the worst area. But you know, as my daughter assessed it when she was little, these are good people who are just trying to make it. And you give voice to the voices. We've created great policy where we protect the residents of Orange County, where we protect the environment. We've acquired more environmentally sensitive land than ever before. But we're also being smart on how we move forward. We've got issues that didn't start overnight, but that we're dealing with today. But one thing I'm most proud of is I am out in my community all the time. Every single week, every single month, I am with my community because I care about my community and because I want my community to know that someone's fighting for them. And that's why I'm running for my final term. This is it. We have term limits. And we've done a lot, but we've done it together. And now we get to finish this up and make it the best term ever. We've improved on transportation. We are working hard on it. We've improved protecting the residents and the dignity that they get in their community. We've improved on services and I love this community. I love the people I represent. And God willing, I get one more term to help do that because it's all about us. And I want my kids and your kids and everyone's kids to have it better than we did. And that is possible. So please vote Myriu Uribe, District Three, your county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you all so much and I wish you all the best of luck. And we will, we will look forward to seeing what August 20th brings.